Today is the 15th meeting of the Athens City Planning Commission. A quorum has been established and one member we're expecting momentarily. Administration of oath, is there anyone who's intending to speak before the commission today? You want to raise your right hand and just do you swear to tell the truth to the commission as you know it? Thank you very much. Disposition of minutes?
These are the minutes of July 2nd, 2015. I move we accept minutes. I had a question about clarification of the wording, but it was just my misunderstanding. So I accept them as is.
Anything else?
You need a motion, I think.
Oh, you need a motion? Does anybody else have something?
Okay.
Second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
As unanimous with one absentee. Cases today, number 15-12, AT&amp;T Monticello Village Wireless Telecommunications Special Use Permit Modifications. Mr. Paskey?
Plain and simple, you got the back in front of you. This is an existing tower on Monticello Drive that they're requesting to do the modification, switching out the antennas. I'll just let the gentleman that's here, Dave.
Did anybody say your last name?
Charzen.
Charzen is speaking. He drove here from Sarver, Pennsylvania. I'd like to let everyone know, we got a few people came a long way for today's meeting, so.
We try helping the tourism.
So I'll let Dave speak to any questions you have in regards to the modification.
Mr. Charzen, could you state your name and the company that you work for?
Hi, my name's Dave Charzen. I'm a contractor with AT&amp;T with Signal Mountain Communications. And AT&amp;T is a tenant on the existing tower on Monticello Drive owned by SPA. We would like to remove three antennas from our current installation and replace them with newer models and also add three remote radio heads. This will allow us to increase our capacity and service to the AT&amp;T subscribers in the area. We've had a tower evaluation performed by the tower owner, SPA, and the tower does have sufficient capacity for the change in weight. We have applied to the state of Ohio for a building permit and that has been granted. So we're asking the planning commission for their approval to proceed with this project.
Okay. Are there any questions?
So you're swapping out three antennas, but you're adding a little bit more as well?
Right. We'll take three down, put three new model antennas up. They're slightly larger. There'll also be three remote radio heads that mount behind those. That type of equipment aids in the LTE service, which is mostly the database, not the voice. So that helps with the streaming videos, text messages, whatever else, that it's not voice-driven.
So there's no real change on the footprint below and it's just the addition of the antennas on the tower itself?
Correct. The height of the tower won't change. The equipment on the ground will remain the same, just the equipment on the tower itself will be modified.
The timetable for doing this would take how long?
Two days.
Two days, okay. Okay, great.
As noted in the documents I supplied, it says the designs of the modified tower and foundations are sufficient for the proposed loading in accordance with the loading criteria and will not require modifications.
I would make a motion that we approve the modifications on 15-12, the AT&amp;T Tower improvements.
Have a second?
I'll second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
As unanimous with one absentee. Thank you, sir.
Thank you very much.
Have a nice trip back.
State for Brew Week.
See, case number 15-13, are we going to look at this separately or?
We have to. We go through each one of them, individual cases.
Okay.
Each one of them has a case, so each one of them. I think the conversation is going to be probably minimal for the next, for the last two, but as a requirement, we need to go through each one of them individually.
Okay, thank you.
I do have all three of them in your same, in the same packet though, to prevent paperwork, yes.
Okay. So case number 15-13, Scott Nysley, 10 West Union Street, Title 41. Mr. Nysley or representative?
I'd like to speak on behalf, but I can introduce it real quick.
Okay.
Just for clarity, before I get started, I've kind of taken the direction that 10 is going to remain 10. 12 and part of 14 is going to become 12. And then the other part of 14 and 16 is going to become 16. So we're eliminating the address of 14. Guy, you're the one affected by that. Hopefully, that's okay with you.
By God, we can't help that.
So start with 10. 10 West Union is one of the multiple buildings damaged or destroyed during the November 16, 2014 fire. Existing building is scheduled to be razed with the construction of the attached proposed structure. This building housed the Uptown Doll business, was a one-and-a-half-story structure with no residential uses. The proposed building will be a three-story mixed-use building with commercial space on the first floor and two three-bed apartment units on floors two and three. The proposed use received a parking variance from the BZA on May 12, 2015. The surrounding uses in all directions are also first-floor commercial residential units on the upper floors. Instead of going through everything, the surrounding use around all the buildings is much the same as this proposal. And it is on B2D, so it is a permissible use in the area. There are no other bulk controls requirements as far as setbacks and lock coverage that are applicable in a B2D. The parking, again, received a variance. There will be a requirement for four bicycle spaces. They do have a bike rack provided at the little, end of the little alleyway going back between their building and the Goodfellas Building to the east of it. Dumpster area, this is in the Uptown centralized recycling area or trash area, so we will be working out how that's all going to work. I have a few ideas and we'll work with our solid waste control officer as well as with the property owners when the buildings are completed as to how we're going to accommodate this and where they will be taking their trash to. But between the trash, between the recycling areas we have across the street and hopefully the one that the owners agree to do to the rear of 16, between those two, I think we'll be, we'll be okay to accommodate for the trash. So as you can see, it went through shade tree approval last Thursday evening. They were required to have two large trees. They're going to put one large tree in front of the site and two in the little alleyway going to the rear, the two mediums that will accommodate the two required trees. Chief Reimer had a few comments, mostly it's about lockbox, knockbox locations and where he wants that and audiovisual devices in the common areas of the floor, of each floor. Captain Harvey, his comments really didn't apply a whole lot to this building, other than he isn't right. Mike White noticed that one bedroom on the third floor did not have a door going in and out of it, so he might want to take care of that. I'll let Paul speak to the Athens Historic Preservation Departments or Guidelines. He met with them, they met Monday evening, was it? And then Director of Engineering, Public Work, his comments for all three buildings are to the rear. And I can let Michael discuss any of those, but they're all minimal. But a lot more will be determined. And honestly, when the buildings are tore down, we can see exactly what we've got going on there. So makes it a little tricky right now. That being said, I'll let Paul speak to the Historic Preservation and then Michael can go after that.
There's just a few comments, and I've provided these to Michael already, but if you're looking at this page, A1 on the architectural drawings, what the Preservation Commission recommended for 10 West Union Street was to have the front, the Union Street elevation, so that would be the southern elevation of the building to be brick, to be bricked, as well as if you're looking at this side elevation, that would be the east elevation, this first 17 feet before the break for the, this entrance here, that as well will be bricked. The plans that Michael first provided had them using a synthetic material, I believe, or a concrete resin or something like that. They requested that that area be bricked and then the rest, they were satisfied. The other minor change is if you look at the front elevation, you can see that there's a column shown here. They were concerned about that column because columns are not typical at all of Uptown Athens. And so they didn't think that was a good fit. So what Michael provided updated drawings to us yesterday that eliminated that column and showed the support structure for that hang, overhang being flush with the building. The Preservation Commission reviewed that by email yesterday and said that was sufficient for their, as far as they were concerned. And then the other comment they had, they had concerns about the material for the windows that'll be facing on Union Street, and this is uniform for all of the buildings. They wanted to see that the windows would frame as opposed to a...
Vinyl clad.
Vinyl or metal clad, right. And so Michael reviewed that and said that was adequate as well to put in. Yes, Matt?
So you're talking about, if you look, you talk about the first pillar. All those support pillars going to be eliminated down the east side of the building?
I don't think we really discussed the one the furthest to the...
To the back, the rear?
Yeah, to the back. I'm not sure what Michael had on there, but they weren't, it's far enough back that they weren't concerned about it from a site. It was really about what you can see from the, what's your impression from the street there?
Okay.
Do you recall, did you make a change to all four of them?
Oh, I hadn't changed all four.
Okay.
I just wondered.
They'll be satisfied with that.
I'm not being critical, I'm just trying to clarify. When you say the first one, I'm thinking, okay, so we'll have three or just two?
The other comment that they made, and this goes for all of them as well, was back to the windows for a moment, just stating that the windows would be non-reflective.
Okay.
And not glazed or, you know, like sunglasses-type look or anything like that, maybe just pretty traditional windows.
Looking at this schematic here, I guess it would be the Union Street side. It looks like the top window actually has a, what do they call it, a lintel? Whatever that arc is on the top, it looks like that's arc, the other ones are straight. Is that, is that a historical feature that, or does it matter, I guess?
I'm not sure if that's historical or not, but they liked it.
They didn't see the problem. Just wondered.
That's a new build structure, you know, the existing wall is going to have to be torn down.
Yeah.
And so for new build structures, the ordinance basically says that what you're proposing, it needs to fit in context with the historic district. But it also, you don't want it to, you don't want it to look like it used to look necessarily, but you want it to just kind of fit into the district as a whole. But also, people should be able to recognize that it's a new build structure and that's not 100 years old or 75 years old.
Okay.
And so they thought that was, just using brick was appropriate for the rest of Uptown.
Okay. The number of bicycle racks are sufficient also for the number of beds?
This only requires four bicycles.
Okay.
I did notice, I think there was a notation, Andy Stones worrying about moving one of the bike racks, is this for this one?
That was from the fire chief with the egress from the door to the rear.
Okay.
It might need to be relocated a little bit, but that's minimal.
Okay. And were Captain Harvey's concerns about the balcony?
This one doesn't have a balcony. His comments are for all three projects.
Okay.
And as I say, looking at the engineers...
I guess it does have a...
What, that?
I guess it does have a small balcony, but that does not overlook the alley to the rear because that, that Chipotle's building is right there. So that's, you know, he always has a concern. It's perfectly legal, though.
Are there, do you want to state your name and the company and are there any, anything that Mr. Paskey left out that you wanted to bring up?
I'm Mike Brothers. I'm with RVC Architects. And I think Paskey did everything.
Pretty well covered, yeah.
Do you have any questions?
Are there any questions for the architect?
No.
Okay.
Dumpster. It's a little nebulous for me to hear that's going to be worked out. I contend that the crossing the streets is already kind of a challenge for people to be utilizing this.
If it allows, we will work on something to the rear of this alley. We'll have to find out from the fire chief if that's going to be permissible back there with the bike rack and with the egress. There is, there is already across the street and there will be, we're hoping, work with Guy to put it back behind 16 where there used to be once before, before the fire occurred. There was a centralized recycling place there. The accessibility to that location from 10 and 12, not going to happen because they're not going to have the backdoor access. So their centralized trash area is going to have to occur either at the end of the little alley, next to their building, or across the street.
12 will. We've created an egress back there.
The 12 will be able to get to the rear.
So they will be able to use that area.
With that being said, I'm sure we can put something small at the end of the little alley specifically for this building only.
I'm sorry.
There's a little alley.
So yeah, what Nancy's asking then, does that mean that you give a variance to 10 to utilize 12s for trash locations?
They're all combined, aren't they?
You just said case by case.
No, I mean, the garbage is all combined. It's all of Uptown franchise areas.
Yeah, it's not about each building having to have their own. It's Uptown franchise area. We will tell them, we will set up established zones and we'll tell them where they got to take it.
That's the question. Put the mic on.
How we do it now throughout Uptown. Since 10 is the only building that has a difficulty in getting it to without crossing the street or walking all the way around, but it's only four bedrooms, or six bedrooms, then I'm sure we can set something up at the very end of the alley. And when I say alley, that's going along the east wall, along the Goodfellas Building to the very rear backward Chipotle's is.
And of course, put up a fence so that it's not seen from...
And then screen it, right.
So the 10 will dump it in front of the building and...
No.
No, I'm just saying practically, as a matter of fact. What will they do?
Can you look at trash collection?
Yeah. I mean, across the street or what?
No.
I just feel really strongly about this because there's so many places in town where it's...
The entire Uptown, people take their trash to central areas.
I am well aware of that, thank you.
And they, we will assign them which central area they take their trash to.
And how will you enforce it?
The way we do all the others uptown.
Not much, right? I mean, you're not there on garbage day sitting looking and seeing...
Well, Nancy, I disagree with you on that.
Well, I mean, I don't think you can. You don't have enough personnel to be a garbage policeman.
If we see a problem on Court Street, are you talking about somebody putting it on the curb?
No, in the buckets.
Utilizing the sidewalk, trash cans.
We get down on those as well.
Yes, we do.
Milwaukee does that.
On a complaint basis or?
Nope.
Or as an observation?
No wonder.
Do we have any on Union Street?
Yes.
Do you have trash cans?
You'll need to come in. You'll need to come up.
It's just a slippery slope. If we don't, you know, you know, Guy, we talked about this forever and it's, it may be better, it may not be better, but...
I don't think she heard what your plan is. That does address her concerns.
Well, except for the one that doesn't have a back door.
But they have an alley to the side of their building. If you look at their floor plan there, they have a little alley and there'll be a bike rack and a trash storage area back there. And the trash company...
Closer than the other one?
It's right outside your door.
So we can make it a condition of the...
But we don't have a right to variance in any way.
It's not variance, it's just a condition.
No, I said, we don't have a right in any way to turn it down, so what's the point?
Yeah, it follows code. It follows code.
As interpreted, right?
Can you clarify the balcony for me on this?
The balcony is, it's just off of a bedroom, one bedroom.
That's why we have this pool.
And it's in the back.
That's why we have a pool situation.
About 50, 60 feet. It's far back.
So it's jetting out into that alley?
Yeah. A little bit, yes.
Okay.
The window's a garbage can and a bike rack.
And it's not an alley, by the way. That is part of their property.
It's not a street light, it's part of the property.
That's a dad.
He just used...
Their side yard.
Part of the reason we want to keep it open is because we know that there are doors that open into it. It'd be mean to lock off doors.
Are you next door Navy, I mean?
We're being nice.
Okay. So are we going to approve these individually then?
Yes, I think we have to.
Okay.
We could just move to approve all three at once, couldn't we? We could move to approve all three at once.
We're hearing it as individual cases.
Each one of them has to have a case and each one has to be voted on individually.
But you could make a motion and I don't know. I'm going to sit anyway.
To clarify on the shade tree, they also, it says that we'll try to plant one large shade tree the right away on West Union and two mediums, but in the narrative, it talks about the bank being available.
I'm concerned, and I voiced my opinion on this, with the width of the sidewalk in trying to put a large tree in front. I actually brought that, or attention to that, the Lamborn's Building is a perfect example. I do not think there's going to be adequate enough room to plant a tree in front of that building even though they were given permission to do so. Once you put the pit in, I think it limits the width of the sidewalk for accessibility and everything, and I think it's going to end up having to be banked. So it's going to be researched and looked into, but, so that's why that tentative statement is in there.
I can't remember the power lines on that side either.
Right, they can bank them. I think in all cases, I don't think a tree would be suitable on that.
There's a streetlight. Power lines. The streetlights. Okay.
I guess I was just clarifying that even though the shade tree, you know, indicated that, but they also stated that they're allowing all properties to bank.
If they have to. Basically, I think Mr. Ingram, myself, and Ron Lucas will pay a little visit and try to figure it out whether it's safe or reasonable to put a tree in and still meet all the requirements for accessibility and width of sidewalk, et cetera, through there. Horse Street sidewalks are about 14 feet wide. These other ones are only around 11 feet. So if you put a four-foot wide bay in there, that's really starting to squeeze it down.
It'd be nice to have a tree on that side of the street though, for shade.
Yeah, it would. So we will research that.
Okay.
I don't think you need a large, you know, then you're starting to, in my mind, if the large tree, as it gets bigger, you know, you're blocking out the exterior of the...
Well, you can't put the medium or smalls up there, they won't last.
Yeah. Trees get shredded on Court Street and Union too quickly. They have to, once they make a certain size, they survive, but they're getting there.
Why are we even discussing it?
Well, it might survive to nice old age, who knows?
They don't even survive on Mill Street.
Okay. Are there any other questions, remarks?
I'll make the motion to approve 15-13, 10 West Union.
With the conditions being met by the city engineer and dumpster location.
Yes.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
It's unanimous. Case number...
Can I clarify that for all conditions established on the Title 41?
Report.
Pardon me?
Report.
Yes, correct.
Case number 15-14, Gary Hunter, 12 West Union Street, Title 41.
Again, one of the buildings that was destroyed in the fire. This building housed the Jack Neal business and was a three-story structure with two units, total of nine beds before. This project also includes half of 14 West Union, which included the former campus sundry and one three-bedroom apartment. The proposed building with the combination of the two parcels will be a three-story mixed-use building with commercial space on the first floor and three five-bed apartment units and one one-bed efficiency apartment on floors two and three. The proposed truck, proposed use received a parking variance as well from the BZA and much like the other projects, the surrounding uses are all in like with this proposal. Again, it meets all the bulk controls and it's a B2, so it's a permissible use, or B2D, excuse me. The trash area, again, will have access, as what Guy just pointed out, to the rear of 16. So if we have the centralized trash to the rear of 16, then they have direct access to it. And then the shade tree, again, two trees were required. They provided one large tree and one tree to be banked. And again, we'll investigate that, whether it can happen. And the same comments from the fire chief, the police chief, and again, I'll let Paul discuss the historic preservation recommendations for this building.
They had no issues. They were satisfied with the way it was presented.
Any questions from the commission?
Again, on the bicycle spacing.
This one needs, this one will need to work out an arrangement for bicycle, be it either in agreement with Guy at the back of 16 or with Scott on the little alley next to it. They have nowhere to do it internally. They have no yard whatsoever, and I think I noted that on here. 16 spaces require zero provided.
In the first one, back to 10, it said four spaces require zero provided, but you told us that there was going to be one placed in their side yard.
Their side yard, yes. This one doesn't have a side yard.
Okay.
Or a rear yard, or a front yard. So they will need to accommodate bicycle parking as an agreement. Guy, are you willing to say they can have a big bicycle rack in the back of yours?
Am I willing to do that? I'm willing to do that.
He listens to the architect.
But 16, this guy willing to do it at that level, plus how many do you need for your building?
He needs 12. So it'll be a 28-bay rack back there.
But we can mount it on a wall.
Not that big.
Okay.
Your standard bike rack, I think, holds seven. So that'd be four of them, maybe?
I'm sorry, you were saying that you might moust some on the wall or?
We could do that. If we put a wall up in the back, we can always mount it and it doesn't have to be right on the ground. It can be stacked or, we will investigate and make sure that 28, and if we can't meet it there, then we'll try to create a space inside Gary's. But I have full confidence, we can get all 28 back there.
So this approval be on condition that there are 28, or I should say 16 spaces available?
Do we have the authority to reduce that based on constraints?
Technically, it's in Title 23. I think it would take the BZA.
We're not sending them back to the BZA.
Right, it's a parking requirement, in essence. It's under that section. Which does pose an interesting question, since they got a variance for parking, because they get it.
Is there any comment from the audience that someone wishes to make as we're going through this, by the way? Okay, just want to make sure. Do we want to put a motion up?
Well, in terms of bike racks, a lot of times a bike rack's capacity has to do with how well people stack them. I mean, if you look at the one in the parking garage, for instance, we've got, somebody regularly parks one parallel with their bike rack.
But I don't have that level of staff, as Snutson was saying, to do bike patrol police on how they park it.
No, are they, but that's it. The rack we have in the parking garage, I can imagine could accommodate 20 if they knew how to stack them properly. Okay? When I say stack it properly, it's like how you package eggs, something like that. There's lots of different ways to pack things, package things. And I'm assuming that the tenants in one apartment complex could actually work it out if they have problems like that. And I would also assume that a lot, some would actually bring them upstairs to...
Yeah, that's what I would think, too.
You know, I've been in enough apartments where the thing's parked in somebody's bedroom or living room, so.
The vacuum cleaner.
Along with the vacuum cleaner, you say? Yeah, with the vacuum cleaner.
Money lives on my balcony.
So I'm not that concerned about it.
That's fine. Then we won't, I'm not that concerned either, I was just asking for clarification. And I wish that we had to that level in our essence of Athens where there'd be innovative, interesting-looking bicycle racks, yes.
Not many do succeed anywhere.
The primary exterior building, building material on the West Union elevation is going to be brick for this one, too, right?
Correct.
Okay.
In fact, half of this one will be the existing facade of 14 that's remaining. They're going to preserve the facade of half of this structure.
Okay.[1766.32]
Do you feel, do you feel like with the, with the new exterior materials, you'll be able to match?
It's not going to match because the way they designed the building, it's going to be kind of unique where half of 14 remains and then all of 12 is being rebuilt, almost to send away the queen Anne. And so from the outside, it's going to look like two totally different structures, but it will be the same floor plan inside.
But it'll be a complementary look?
Yeah.
Okay.
So we're going to lose 14 entirely, so that will become some kind of missological address, is that it?
There won't be one.
Okay. So if we order pizza today...
I get rid of, we get rid of the combined brown and white door.
Okay.
Is it brown?
Green.
Green. I'm colorblind.
Red, green, colorblind.
It's not a major issue, right?
Well, I made the motion for the last one, so somebody else should take it.
Paula?
I'll move. We accept or approve 12 West Union with, along with compliance from the Title 41.
So 1513 and 1514 from the amendment?
Say what?
So we're saying 1513 or 1514?
I'm on just 1514.
Okay. We do nicely.
Yeah, his was, okay, first, yes.
All right.
I'll second that.
Oh, good.
All in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous?
The conditions are...
With the conditions, I think that's what she said, with the narrative.
Case number 15-15, Guy Phillips, 16 West Union Street, Title 41.
Again, this is the last of the buildings that were, that were destroyed during the fire. This was where the Kismet business was, clothing store, was a two-story structure with one unit above totaling four beds. This project also included half, the other half of 14 West Union, which included the former smoke zone and one four-bedroom apartment. The proposed building with the combination of the three parcels will be a three-story mixed-use building with commercial space on the first floor. Three four-bed apartment units on floors two and three. The facades of 14 and 16 West Union are both being retained and will be incorporated into the new structure. Proposed use received the parking variance from the BZA. Surrounding uses, again, in this area, it's the same as the other projects mentioned. Again, B2D, the use is permissible, meets all the requirements of bulk controls. Parking is required to have 12 spaces that, again, the variance was granted, and a bicycle, they're required to have 12, and they do have it to the rear of their building, as well as having a trash area to the rear of the building that shall work. Shade Tree Commission approved the variant, or approved the trees, recommendation, three were required, one large being provided, two trees banked. But again, we're going to research the situation on this one. The police and fire, same comments as before. This one is one that does have a upper-level courtyard, but as you can see on the floor plan, it does not project over any alley or street. It's an interior-type courtyard on the roof.
So that's going to be a two-story courtyard going from second floor to third, is that what?
It's on the second floor and then there's...
It's open to the third.
It's open, yeah.
Okay. And the sun deck is higher than the courtyard, is that what I'm looking at? Third floor.
Courtyard right here.
Oh, there is a balcony, there is a small balcony to the rear of this one, on the alley to the rear.
Yeah, both on the second and third.
On the second and third. And then again, I'll let Paul discuss the historic preservation, but with the facades being preserved.
Quick question, if I look at the schematic here, it looks like there's an open area, so really the bike rack will be sheltered, is that what I'm seeing right here?
The back area right now, where the fire started before, that will be like that again.
Okay.
And that whole area underneath there will be covered. In the past, there used to be a couple cars parked back there. I think the proposal is now is for it to be for bikes, trash, et cetera, to accommodate the needs that we're talking about for all these buildings.
Okay, and if I remember, this is all gets sprinkled, of course, yeah?
Yes.
Okay, great. That would be my concern, this overhang out becomes a, somebody puts a barbecue deck behind it and the living room on the second floor, it has problems. That wouldn't happen either.
They could, it could be, somebody could put a barbecue out there, but I, the underside of it's going to have to be fire-protected, I mean, that's a requirement from state.
You could always put a sign saying no barbecue.
Okay.
How far back historically are you supposed to research in terms of trying to, in other words, with the Kismet, the former location for Kismet? I know that's baked, whatever, I know that's how it looked probably, well, when I was a student back in the 70s and whatnot, Vera Smith and whatnot, but are you supposed to research before that? Because I can't imagine that, I think he probably did a remodel on the front.
Right. A lot of these had a remodel done back in the very early years.
Because the bottom, it used to be like a little stone, the stone, right?
Right, right. It's not necessarily about researching, it depends on how you want to approach it. One is if you want to preserve, one, if you want something to look like it's, like it's historic, or you want it to look in context, or if you're trying to rehabilitate something to what it was originally.
Right.
And so there's, there's a few different options there. Rehabilitation means that you, you need to try to figure out exactly what they did when they built this thing on day one, including what color paints they used.
Sure, and I understand that.
So that's usually not what we're looking at, is we're not going into that rehabilitation depth. With Guy specifically, I believe Mr. Phillips is getting, is working with the state on historic preservation tax credits, so they'll be giving him guidance as to what type of materials that they need to see, what color, I don't think they'll get into colors, but they'll be doing that review and giving comment, saying if you want to get your tax credits, this is what you need to do. So a little bit, get a little bit more, and honestly, I'm, I'm not so much of an expert that I can say you need to go back 50 years or 75 years.
Well, I understand that, but if you're talking about maintaining the tone
Right.
of a particular district.
Right.
I don't know that, what Vera Smith or whoever owned that prior with all the little stone facade, I don't know that that has ever really fit in
I think that's a good point.
to the concept. Is that something that would change out with the design?
You're talking about the stuff below the windows, right?
I'm talking about, yeah, below the window. On both sides of the entrance.
I think our goal was to try and keep it as it, well, not completely keep it as it was, but try to replicate that.
Okay.
But I don't think that really, that's, to me, the opportunity to really rethink that, because I've never thought that that, I mean, what, I could keep calling it, referring it to as the Vera Smith. You know, he tried to contemporize the front, and I think that's what he did with the little rock embedded in the bottom there. So I would think that this is the opportunity, you know, especially since, you know, the commission, everybody's trying to bend over backwards to maintain a historical sense of this, that maybe that wants to get reevaluated.
We can explore that and maybe do either precast concrete, stone, there's any number of materials that we could.
Well, you could also use brick, right?
Oh, we could do that as well, yes.
Yeah.
Part of the difficulty there is that, again, if he's trying to approach and get the historical track tax credits.
Sure.
The last word on that's going to be the Ohio Preservation Society, right? I mean, that's, you know, that's where the bucks are going to be. We can talk about what we want to see, and I've always seen Uptown as, being a hodgepodge anyway, because as cities progress, you know, you look at, you look at the diner, I mean, you know, fake 1950s, and everybody loves it, but you know, is that, I know when I went in, there was quite a bit of reaction to that, saying, why would you want to put something like that? If we go back, all the way back to historical records, maybe we should have outhouses in the back and realize the parking variance would not fit either, because there wasn't any requirement for parking in, you know, in 1890 or something. So it's always hard to say where, where do you want to fix that benchmark in terms of time?
Well, I understand that, and I'm not suggesting that we go back to outhouses. What I am suggesting is that, I've also heard over the years, that what you're bringing up is that Athens Uptown is a hodgepodge, and, you know, this is a major chunk of that district, and is this the opportunity to make sure that things reflect to a more, I hate to say, uniform, because everybody gets, you know, like it's vanilla or something, but, you know, to where that atmosphere, that ambiance is really more united than what you're saying some people...
Okay.
Guy may have it. We have met with the state of Ohio, a lower-level person who's kind of giving us some good, good direction. The state of Ohio will, you know, the historical group will be making the decision. They kind of pick a time when the, when the building was historically significant. I think we're looking at keeping the front of the building, it's been white for many years. I think we'll be keeping it white, which is kind of a disappointment to me, but that was, that's what they're doing. We didn't talk about the specifics of it, but that makes a good point, making it look attractive. But the state, they will be making the decision with their expertise, it will be the correct decision. It may not be the decision that I like or that you like, but their expertise, it will be what, what is today the correct decision. Do we need to talk about the four? Something else they said was, we've got the three-story building, and then the other one is a tall two-story, but putting the third story on, the lower-level gentleman was saying that the state would really like it if we moved that third floor back a little bit further and maybe went up four in the back. And you were talking that it was three, are we limited to that, or can we go?
You can go four.
Four at the same height, or at a different height?
No, it's four 50 feet, I believe, in the middle.
Well, me, I just wanted to make sure, because when you said three, that may change. It's going to cost more money and all this, but the state is, the lower-level gentleman's kind of leaning that way and saying that the guy that makes the decision would, would probably rather see it that way. So I need a little flexibility on it, sounds like I have it.
Wasn't that a whole reason to look at that?
I think if we stated here today that, and when we get to plans, I don't know if you, yeah, you do have that flexibility, but I think it needs to be clarified with this group that that is a possibility.
Then that would need to be the plan that you submit to us, I would think.
It'd be a revision. There's a, another permit will come through to us, to my office after this, the actual use permit, after they obtain their state building permits will come through, and that's when I cross-reference to make sure that plan matches what's approved here today.
Isn't it possible that we could put in a caveat then, that based on what the Ohio Historic Preservation Office, they call themselves History Connection or whatever, determines that we will align with that modification to the plan?
I say absolutely that's a possibility, as long as the bedrooms do not increase and everything stays the same. I think that's, I think we can say that.
I mean, some of us would really like to see this proceed.
Is that true?
With the bedrooms, you said it was three four-bedroom? It's actually four four-bedroom.
On this one?
Is there a mistake on the...
So what are you going to do? Say he can do whatever he wants?
The narrative says three four-bedroom.
In order for him to get credit, he asked you to align. Which one is, this one is the one that's moving back, right?
The case is the typo.
No, 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 I meant your floor plan.
Two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight.
Which one's moving back? The one on the right or the one on the left?
We're putting them together, so I think it's both.
They're both?
Yeah.
At the first floor? I mean, between the first and second floor?
The roof, whatever the roof line, there'll be, the buildings are two and a half stories and the other one's three stories. We may put a, we'll go that roof level and then go back a little bit and go four stories, I think is kind of how it is.
And that's on the one that's...
It's all one building, after you put the two together, so.
It's hard to record ahead of my...
Well, you just won't, you won't see it. I mean, you'll have to be across the street and looking out the window to see, to see it.
But the bedrooms won't change?
I'm sorry.
Number of bedrooms and all that, one thing.
If he is going to come back, Gary, it's a...
We can have a little bit of revision.
Forget that first thing.
The fourth floor would be just this piece.
And what are those?
Those would be the bedrooms.
Okay, you're still, it's a work in progress.
Yes, exactly.
Okay.
And we would keep a firewall here so that we don't have any issues.
Okay.
Okay, Mr. John.
I think they may want to see as well.
Let's say extra bedrooms, will you?
Actually, perhaps.
Other variance was for four four-bedroom parking.
Okay.
But the drawing I have here only shows...
This is different, though. Looks like...
Yeah, and that's, this is weird, we're still...
Yeah, this is an open living room, this is an open living room here on the second and third floor, which you have several beds here.
No.
And you've changed this line right here.
So the only way the truck can get in is this?
And the stairwells are different too.
And that's to accommodate the stairwell. So we'd still have a four-yard.
Court goes here, court goes here, sun deck here on the third floor still?
Correct, as of right now.
Okay, and their dialogue is they want you to pull it back on this one right here.
Yes, this would stay the same. If this becomes part of the third floor and we don't do a fourth floor, then it'll be pulled back. And then, and then it'll be stepped back.
I figured.
Okay.
When would you know whether this was going to happen?
Just get...
We'd have to get a historical review.
Here's one of the things right next to us.
Because I'm just asking him then, is, you know...
Do we approve it?
Do we approve modification?
When we don't know the finished product.
Somebody allowed him to create it. And there's another one behind it.
Michael, what I'm saying here, what you've done is that sun deck where there used to be a fourth, and you take, basically duplicate the third, fourth plan, fourth floor. So this is duplicated again a second time?
Yeah.
Hold on, I see.
We've been trying to get it to work.
Well, says we're done with this. I think as far as breakfast, please, maybe...
Yeah, well, we have two communications.
This is substantially different than that.
I guess, driven by the historic preservation.
Yeah, let's not step on it.
Really, that's been the most common...
As long as it fits code, I have it. It's going to look the same from outside.
Okay.
Nothing changed.
Do you want to place a motion thing?
Andy did his calculations. Yeah, and everything.
Good thing you have the mic on.
Yeah, it was six.
It's different, this is the...
I think the way to move forward on this is, they've made some alterations to the plan based on, obviously, what they're meeting with the state. There is 16 beds, and they did get their variance for 16 parking spaces, but then the plans I had show 12. Now they're 16. Andy's calculations were based on 12 and everything he did as well. We can either, I think it's safe to say we can move forward pending the application is here to keep this going, because they all need to work in conjunction with each other. We've already, we realize that, and demo's about to start. Basically, I just gave Michael a little slap in the hand for bringing me something different today than what I have here.
Sorry about that.
But I think the state's going to probably, the historical preservation in the state of Ohio is going to determine exactly how they want this facade looking, which will alter the floor plan. The bottom line is, it's going to meet bulk controls no matter what. Four stories is permissible up to 50 feet, and provided they do not go over 16 beds, I think it's, I would be, if we tabled and made them come back, we'd be having the same discussion, so I don't think there's any need for that. We just say that, you know, that I'll be more than happy to share with you the plans when they know what you're going to do, get them back to you, but as far as I'm concerned, the 16-bed is the important part here, and four stories and 50 feet. Those are the three parameters that really have any impact today, and I think if we meet all those, then everything should be okay.
So could you remind me, I'm getting ready to make the motion, why we have 12, why you have 12?
I think what happened here, looking at this drawing, is they were kind of, they turned it into this kind of midstream, where they were moving the, like I said, the third floor back, so that historic preservation is going to want to see the, basically the facade the way it is. Their original proposal originally had it coming straight up in front of the front facade. Now they're stepping it back like they kind of did at Lambourn's is a perfect example.
Phoenix on Fourth. I mean, but the main question I really have is why, how did they end up getting 16 parking variants?
Because when they submitted at that time, they did have 16.
Well, this was a work in progress.
And then I caught it, you know, this drawing I have here, the one you have only has 12. Easily, they could have just said, see where on the plan I submitted to you where it says third floor floor plan? If that would have said third and fourth floor floor plan, then it would have been close to accurate other than having to change some layout around because of firewall next to the Union Bar and Grill. So.
Okay.
It's just midstream, a little change that they forgot to write out on the prints.
Well, I can understand that and there's garbage can here too. I'm not going to make that motion unless there's garbage.
There'll be 32 bicycles now in the bicycle rack, but outside of that, everything else is.
I just find it so ironic that we're not worried about rural parking.
He has it in there, trash dumpster, trash area to be shown, agreement with other property owners uptown central. So it was included in this.
I just wanted to ask, okay, I'd like to move to accept the Title 41 report. It's a little bit loose right now, but pending the outcomes of the Historic Preservation Office, provided that they do not exceed their variance of 16 parking places, so that would be 16 bedrooms, right?
Correct.
Okay.
Okay. And again, as much as the lack of white paint, that's a south-facing wall. I think if I had my druthers, I'd rather see a white brick wall rather than a red one.
You know, Guy's done historic preservation of these buildings and they're beautiful brick and I can understand why he'd like to.
I understand that too. He's done a good job on the buildings he owns.
Did I hear a second on that?
She's.
All in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous?
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Good luck, Guy.
We have communications, but I understand that Mr. Logue has to leave at 1:15. Is it a brief report that you could just go ahead and give yours now?
I can give it to you really fast, that would be great.
That's good communications.
The Historic Preservation Commission, they did meet on Monday. I think we've covered most of the discussion from that meeting. We're also moving forward with our inventory project. We've got about 12 or 15 of the buildings uptown that we've updated the inventories that were done in the early 80s and we should have another dozen or so completed within the next two weeks. And so we're working on all of that. It's starting to look pretty good. Only other thing I had for this afternoon is just a reminder that on Tuesday at 10:30 in the morning, the city and the university are working on a bicycling event to celebrate the city because it is a bicycle-friendly community as well as the reopening of the Ohio University Stretch Bike Path. So that's moving forward. That'll be at 10:30 in the morning. It's open to the public. Will be a ceremony with the mayor and President McDavis to start with and a short one and a little bit of ribbon cutting. And then for anybody who's interested, we're going to do a ride to the community center. The meeting's going to start at Bike Path near Petunia Stadium. And next week as well, there's a series of Ohio University Master Planning meetings going on. I believe probably some of those are public workshops, but I'm not entirely sure. I haven't looked at my calendar yet and.
And the natural hazard mitigation plan is starting to move through?
Natural, yes, thank you. Actually, two other things. Natural Hazard Mitigation Plan that was presented to council on Monday and I believe they're going to bring that up for first reading either this Monday or after August recess. There's also a small committee working with the Athens, or the Hawk Hocking Adena Bike Path that I've been asked to serve on. We're going to have a meeting next Thursday evening, starting to talk about signage for the bike path. There's been some movement towards getting some uniformity amongst all of the owners of the bike path. So that would be Hocking College, I think the City of Nelsonville, Ohio University, City of Athens and the Athens County Commissioners so that we have some sort of just uniformity and ways to convey information across all of those entities so that it's a more cohesive path.
Is this the, was it Adena Hocking Committee? I thought there was a standard.
There is, yeah. They've, they're putting it together and they've asked a few others to come into the meetings with the city and the universities so that we can start kind of talking about how signage might look like now.
Okay. And just to let you know, Sir Satrik could tell you, we did open a bid for the Columbus Road Spur Bike and it came in way over.
Way over.
So we're going to have to deal with that somehow.
Sounds good.
It's not good.
I know.
Any other questions for Mr. Logue? Okay, thank you, Mr. Logue. Going back to communications.
I think we have two communications.
Yeah, we have two communications here. The first one I'm going to do since she came from Chattanooga, Tennessee, I believe, is the O'Reilly Auto Parts Project. This will be a Title 41 that will likely be coming forth in the second session of August, not the first. The drawing came into me last week, but I thought that let them introduce the communication to you today as to what the project is. This is going to be located at the site, you all know where the used car lot is, where the old certified gas station used to be.
On East State Street.
On East State Street. It's going to be in that. Currently, that property is like a horseshoe-shaped property and the car lot is on the inside the horseshoe, a little lot of its own. They're going to shift that a little farther to the east, give them part of the U-shaped lot, so to speak, so we will have a lot split coming on this as well as part of the Title 41, but it's just a transfer of property between the two. And then the O'Reilly's Auto Part will be in the site to the west of where the used car lot is. It's been for sale for quite some time. And that's all I can say. And I'll, I'll let Brittany, that explain more about it.
I have one set of drawings. I didn't realize I did have one, which I'll pass them around and some elevations.
Okay, great. Which way do you want me to go here?
When you go to the podium, if you could just, again, state your name and the company you're working for?
I'm Brittany Whitley and I work for the Hutton Company. We're the developers for the project.
Okay. Would you like to go ahead and describe the project?
He described it pretty well. It's going to be in O'Reilly's. I apologize, with it being vacation season, I was the only one that was able to make this meeting, so I haven't had the project the whole, I've had it since about Tuesday afternoon. The building is just over 7,000 square feet. I think there's 26 parking stalls, if I counted right, or 36, 36. I wrote it down on one of those papers, I can look. Pretty straightforward. I think the plan, I don't know, as far as the ordinance is to, the building elevation is there. I believe it's metal, it's a metal building. We are going to be doing some work on the neighboring car lot to make it compliant with the city codes. We're going to be, along with the owner of that property, building, they will be getting a new building at the car lot. I don't, I don't think they have a design yet for it, everything's so early. The canopy that I believe is in the right-of-way.
No, but we've asked for it to come down.
Okay. It will be, it will come down. Their parking, which is gravel and whatnot, will be paved along with the O'Reilly's. Everything will kind of be done along together. There'll be a pedestrian sidewalk implemented across the two sites and so.
Excellent.
There's a big retaining wall in the back of the O'Reilly's project, about a 20-foot high at its max point. That retaining wall will be at the, behind the O'Reilly's.
So there'll be some excavation to.
Yes, and there's, because of the height of the wall, there's going to be some special testing, some special geo-testing to stabilize it as the wall goes up. And so all that will be.
We're notorious for slip-run hillsides here.
Yeah, so, yeah, they're already planning for that special testing to make sure everything gets, it doesn't slide while the wall's getting put up to keep it from sliding, so.
Oh, that's under dumpster.
And I guess the other concern, of course, is paving over an area that previously was not paved. We'll have to work with stormwater issues.
And another issue that Andy had many times over was the number of curb cuts. And if you notice their new plan, they're going to have a shared access between themselves and the auto dealership. And I, the surveyor did call me yesterday and he is doing, preparing the split. And I told him that I did want him showing that shared access easement recorded and on the survey. So they're working with us on that, so we're not increasing or adding any more curb cuts than what's there.
And y'all should be able to see on that site layout what he was talking about, the horseshoe-shaped lot and how we're going to split it and the car lot will retain about half of that.
Okay.
Great. Any questions or comments?
We're ever knocking out two piers with one stone, this one's going.
Okay, sounds good.
Taking care of some variances. The used car lot had a temporary variance for the gravel parking. This will resolve that situation. Car lot will not have to go through site plan because this building's going to be less than 5,000 square feet, but obviously everyone's going to see what's happening because it's obviously going to be shown as part of this one. So, but it will be under separate permit, so.
So we'll have a Title 41 for the cars.
For O'Reilly's, correct.
O'Reilly's, and then we're going to have this.
A basic permit on the auto. For a while, they were talking about relocating his building. Does that still work or you don't know?
I'm not sure.
Okay.
Any other questions? Great, thank you very much, appreciate it.
Timetable is next, the next meeting, late August.
The second meeting in August, yes.
So we expect to see you again or somebody else here?
Jeff Howell is the project manager for the site. Hopefully, he'll be back from vacation by then.
The project manager has already been up here once and met with Andy and I, so, you know, and then they, I'll give them credit, every permit they need is sitting on my desk already. They're so far, what's the term, horse before the carrot? I mean, they've, they've got it together. They've got everything into them, so we're going to start reviewing it next week and then I'll get with Andy the week after he gets passed to finalize and I'll get stuff out to the staff for Title 41. And we've got five weeks to the next meeting, so we should be okay. But, you know, as Brittany was saying, Jeff's gone this week, Andy's gone this week, Andy's gone next week, I'm gone in three weeks, so we're, it's that time of year.
Yeah.
Great, thank you very much. Our next communication?
Next communication is 77, is that the number? 77 Mill Street, this is the Lutheran Church. They have two small structures at the corner of Mill and Playground that they received the variance Tuesday night to tear those two houses down and build a six-unit, 21-bed building at that location. The variance was for lot coverage, maximum allowed is 60% and they're at 62. So they were just barely over on lot coverage and they did receive their variance and I will let them do a presentation for you. I think they're going to present the same thing that they did at the VVA other night and it was a very nice presentation.
Communication and then we'll come back to that.
Go ahead and start whenever you'd like.
My name is Mike Berg and I am a member of Christ Lutheran Church. I've been on the church council there for the last six years during which time we have been working towards where we are today. And I was the president of the council in this past year when the specific proposal was developed. I am by no means the primary player, however, in this whole thing. There have been many, many people involved. I just end up being the spokesperson. So I hope that what I'll be able to do today is give you some context for how this whole So the first thing I guess I'd like to emphasize, even though you may know it already, is that we're talking about our neighborhood. So we're here, that's the church building. We own a little church fellowship house right next door and then the two properties are right beyond that. So this is very much our neighborhood that we're talking about and it's a neighborhood we care about. So this is our church building. We purchased the lot for this church building in the late 50s. We purchased it very much, I say we, but of course the founders, purchased it very much because it was adjacent to the university. It's been part of our identity for our entire history to be a place where it would be very easy and welcoming for college students to attend. So that's why we are on Mill Street. As a matter of fact, in the 90s, we were bursting at the seams and rather than sell that property and build elsewhere, which some other churches have done, we expanded on that site because that's where we want to be. We want to be part of Mill Street. So we own that building and then there is a building right next door to the church building itself that we call our church house. That's not part of this project at all, but I thought I ought to mention it. We use it for classrooms and storage and off-space and that sort of thing. That's the rear view of that house. So what we're going to be talking about today are those two properties on the corner. We have owned 8183, which was originally a duplex, which is why those numbers, it gets kind of confusing sometimes in the history of things. They purchased that land at the same time they purchased the land for the church building itself. It was used in the past for Caroline and my sister's place in the 60s and 70s. We put our interns there in the 90s, but since then it's been used primarily as a student rental. 77 Mill Street, the one in between, was purchased much more recently in the early 2000s so that we would have that whole part of the street there. So what's the problem? Why are we not staying with the status quo? Well, for starters, these were small, modest homes when they were built in the early 20th century. These were not some of the gorgeous homes that you see elsewhere in town that really you want to do a lot to preserve. And we have done updates to them over the years, but those two houses are just plum, worn out. And it's become no longer feasible or practical to try to upgrade them so that they would be attractive to what today's students are looking for. And as a matter of fact, we've had trouble renting them in the last few years. We have had as many as nine beds in the past filled in those two buildings. We only had four rented for 2015. And so really, the status quo was no longer a viable option. We had to do something and we've been thinking about it for a long time. This is not something that we woke up a few months ago and said, oh, good, let's build a new building on that lot. We talked about perhaps tearing the buildings down and making a parking lot. That would actually generate very little income and I'm going to get to the income part here in a minute. We also talked about redeveloping the land for social service agencies since social service agencies had used that, one of those buildings in the past. Well, the truth of the matter is that even social service agencies don't want to be on Mill Street anymore. We approached two different agencies that we have worked with intensely and both of them told us, no, thank you very much, we don't want to be on Mill Street. So that was a dead end. We did explore it, it was a dead end. We have talked about selling it. Well, yeah, we could sell the property. It would also generate less income and again, back to the income in a moment. And the other thing is the people who buy it would use it for student rentals and then we wouldn't have control over our next-door neighbors. And so selling was really not an option. So after a lot of agonizing, and it did involve a lot of agonizing, we've decided that what actually makes the most sense in our case is to tear those structures down and make a new building. And one of the advantages as far as we are concerned is that we will remain in control over what happens adjacent to us. But here's the important point. What we have decided to do with all of the profit from this rental is to use it for benevolence, to use it for social service agencies in town. We have a rough estimate that after expenses, we would have profits of about $50,000. None of that would go into the church coffers. None of that would go to pay the pastor's salary. We've already set up a giving committee comprised of people in town who are, if I named the names, you would be, roll your eyes at how perfect these people are for deciding how that money should be spent. But just to give you a rough rule of thumb, for example, Nancy maybe can correct me if I'm wrong on this, but I think you can sponsor a Habitat House for about $50,000 a year. So that's the kind of thing that we could do with this kind of income. So in the past, when we have had these rentals from the smaller buildings, that, all of that income has come into. that income has come into our church operating budget and we have increased our own benevolences that way. There was not a bright line in that case about exactly what was happening in that money. And that's what several of our congregational members said to us, you can't go on this way, just dumping it into the church budget and then deciding after the fact. So we have established a limited liability company to aid in separating the budget of this structure from the church operating budget. We're also, and this is in the exploratory phases, we're also looking into the possibility of making this interfaith housing. So the purpose of the project would be to promote a safe environment for dialogue and mutual understanding, assisting students of diverse traditions to build meaningful collaborative relationships across religious differences. And we have looked into, we have a committee studying this, we've looked into it, we've discovered there, that this is legally possible, because that was, you know, one of our first questions, well, wouldn't that, you know, be a problem with discrimination? And no, not necessarily, if done properly. And we've already gotten interest from other faith leaders in town. So we're now in the process of exploring different models for exactly how you set that up. So that wouldn't happen right away, but that is definitely part of our thinking in terms of these buildings. So the new building itself, we've got the plans there, will be a single structure. Part of it will be four three-bedroom apartments facing Mill Street and part of it will be three three-bedroom apartments facing Kurt Street for a total of 21 beds. Of course, it will have modern kitchens and bathrooms. And this is something I only learned the other night when we were preparing for the Board of Zoning Appeals, that actually our plan is going to have more green space than our current structures do, because we have more parking in the back now than we will in the future. So actually, we will be including, increasing green space and, you may be interested in this, we're not going to have any balconies in these buildings. So you've got a more detailed plan in front of you right now, but, so, Mill Street this way, Kurt Street that way.
Is that actually Kurt Street? Is that the extension of that?
I don't think anyone knows. It's actually owned by the university. Andy did look that up. It's not a city street.
Okay.
Going back through there, so I don't know if it's Kurt's or if it's Cos' or if it's Playground or.
Because I always think Kurt's shoots higher up, but that's.
I just call it the walkway to Siegfried's. We're down there.
And tell you truth, no balconies, that, you may not be able to get student rentals in there.
Well.
It's about city culture, supposedly.
Well, yeah, I hope you're wrong. Our most recent renters who did rent from us were music students who just wanted to be close to the music building. And so when the structures are really much more attractive and up to date on the interior, we're thinking that we will be able to draw.
Probably so.
Students to those. Now, I know you folks think about density, so I wanted to talk about density a little bit. I have lived in Athens for 38 years and in all that time have lived in the neighborhoods close to the university. I lived on North Congress Street for a while and I've lived on Elmwood Place for 30 years now. I've also spent a lot of time on Mill Street because I've been part of that congregation for 38 years. And so I do know a little bit about this issue. And I guess the point I would like to make is that the increased population, density doesn't seem to be a serious problem 363 days of the year. I mean, we are in and out of those, that building all of the time. Not just Sunday morning, but we have staff of three who works there Monday through Friday. We have meetings there all of the time. Not only church meetings, but outside groups use that building for meetings. So I come, I'm probably there two or three times a week. On Sunday morning, do we need to pick up the odd beer can out front? Oh, yeah. But it's, you know, it's not a terrible problem. On the other hand, housing students in older homes and in their neighborhoods is not a good idea either, having lived with that so much. It's been detrimental to our housing stock in the past. And actually, I think I'd like to take this opportunity to say thank you to this group because I think we've seen improvement in the Near East side. It has, we do have fewer student rentals in the Near East side now and fewer of the problems that accompany student rentals. And I thank you for your leadership in that part of it. I guess the other point I'd make is that I think Mill Fest would happen there even if the houses hadn't been supersized. I think as the fests develop, it's a big street and it was, I mean, High Street hasn't been supersized and it's got a fest. I think that Mill Street would be an ideal place to party, no matter how many people live there. In any case, with no balconies and the possibility of interfaith housing in the future, we're kind of hoping that we will attract students who won't be interested in excessive partying. All the students are interested in partying, including students of faith, but it's this excessive partying, of course, that's the problem. And we're certainly aware of that. So in conclusion, we think that this project would improve the appearance of Mill Street. Like I say, the building will certainly be more attractive and will have more green space and more trees. It would provide quality housing for students and it would make a significant impact on our community through the social investment aspect of the project and would generate an increase in tax revenue for the city. So, do you have any questions for me?
A comment. You're going from nine beds to 21 beds?
Right.
It is indeed an increase.
Oh, in density, absolutely.
And we've continued to watch this in that whole corridor, not just Mill, but Mill, Stewart and whatever, which tends to add to the number who are participating in certain events, as it were. But of course, it's within your prerogative to choose, you know, to enlarge student housing in that neighborhood. We used to stand on the corner here at certain high events, so I don't know where we'll be staged now.
Same place. They told them to build an outdoor bathroom for us.
Again, it is an increase in density, but I don't think that is a real serious problem. I remember when we were crafting the comprehensive plan, there was discussion of actually trying to get like an R4 zoning for increased density. We didn't go that direction and, and actually, the, the housing units that are being voted on Stewart has absorbed a lot of the increase in enrollment. What I find in my neighborhood on the west side is that they're less, it's pretty stable in terms of rentals for students versus non-rentals at homeownership, mostly because the students see it as too far away. So their, their horizon of what's too far to go is changed over time. Let's see, a couple of questions I have. There is always a need for handicap-accessible housing and you have a first floor here. Is that something that's in the mix? That would be a very important question for me.
Yes.
Okay. I think actually, I was on zoning board appeals when you had to get a variance for your church when you made the addition at that time. I don't think it was flood plan, I think it had to do a setback, but I don't remember exactly.
It's on a separate parcel.
Yeah, I know, it's nothing to do with it, but I just remember this, this is like any old section, neighborhood requires, you know, a variance on some things just because of lot sizes and the configuration. So really what you really, you're saying it's one building, but actually it's two buildings with a stairwell in the middle that binds it, so to speak. Is that what I'm seeing in the plans?
Yeah.
Okay. I don't see that as a difficulty. Is this the size that has to be sprinkled?
Six units will have to be fire suppressed.
Okay, that's what I was asking, okay.
Only six units?
Four or more requires fire suppression, state of Ohio.
Meaning, so the entire project? Okay, that's what I was.
That's what I was asking really, in that sense. I think there was a PUD down on Colson that actually was able to get away with not having the fire suppression.
Well, this one here, since both units, the two wings, so to speak, are each three unit and there's a common stairwell, I suppose if it's engineered or designed properly with firewalls, that each side would be three and three, it may not need it. That's going to be up to the state to determine.
I suspect a tear on the side safety, they should be.
I agree.
Okay.
There's a failure in the process too.
Okay. I was just asking questions, so the subject has been, you know, at least addressed on some level.
Does that look different than this?
Yeah, that's, that's the old, that's the.
The old, the old.
The older two houses side by side.
Sure, okay.
The one's the little white house, it's almost like a shack, right?
That's, that's the other one. That's further down.
That's on the other side of the street, the other corner. There is a little white house there, yes, but the small house that you're talking about.
Not the tiny house, not the Louis house. I'm at the white house.
The white house is one of the two, yes.
Where I said, go tell them to turn down the music.
Yeah, and we closed the party down last time.
Well, that's every house on Mill when we're down there, Paul.
All I'm saying is that the three stories and, you know, often here, I get stopped in the community to say, you know, you're keeping those limits on height and that's adverse to business and what have you. But when the, you go from a little, small, little house with the one floor and maybe a half of, to a three-story big structure, it really does change the landscape and we're seeing that on Mill and Stewart areas.
It's becoming the norm.
Pardon me?
It's becoming the norm.
Yeah.
Are there any other questions? Comments?
This is a Title 41?
This will be a Title 41, yes. I do not have drawings submitted to me for that as of yet. Jim is sitting here, so I'll put the heat on him that he needs to get them to me and everything by the end of next week to be on the August agenda.
They're planned for Monday, Tuesday.
Okay.
Being with the group this week, so.
Okay, and you have to put the little sign out for Title 41 so everybody knows what's going on.
Yes, we'll get that out two weeks prior to the next meeting, so. My staff has them out there since I'll be gone.
So it'll be the first meeting in August?
Second.
He's not going to be there.
Second, planning commission in August.
Okay.
It, by the time they get them in, we like having that four-week period, especially this time of year with everyone taking vacations.
So that'd be the 20th of August.
Correct. Okay.
Okay. I don't see any problems with it. I mean, so, in terms of the nod, I guess.
You'll have them go through the process of shade tree?
Absolutely.
And all that before coming up to.
A lot of times shade tree coincidentally happens after this meeting, but if they can get on the August agenda, that'd be fine. I'm going to, I remiss to put on the integrated services project. I forgot to put that on their last agenda, so they got to go through as well in August. So I think, probably take both of them. I know it's two different architectural firms, but I think you can get in there and go that. That way it's all done before coming here.
If you get some schematics, can you forward them to the disabilities commission as well?
Sure.
Okay.
I'll send them to Steve and then go from there.
Or send them to Shar, she's secretary for that.
Thank you very much, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Going on to.